No, they melted.
Oh.
That's what the heat did to them.
What's this smell up here? Dang it. It's okay. You're allowed.
It's cursed.
We're, now send.
It's cursed.
We're ready? Okay. Nelson, whenever you're ready, bud.
Yeah, I'm just pulling this up. That takes forever. It's coming. Well, I don't have a gavel.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want me to gavel?
No.
Catch.
That is absolutely fine.
I'll call it the order.
At this, thank you. All right, everybody, it is 3:34 on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and call the New Hanover Policy Committee meeting to order. Ms. Joy, can you call the roll? Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Crable?
Here.
Mr. World of War.
President.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is agreed to. The agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Motion to approve the minutes as written.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is agreed to. Minutes are adopted. The next item on our agenda, and I'm very excited about this because it's not as long as it used to be, is our policy updates. We'll just dive right in. The first policy update today is the comprehensive, the comprehensive health education program, Policy 3540. And please, take us through it.
Good afternoon. We are bringing Policy 3540, the Comprehensive Health Education Program, to you for some revision. The major thing that we will be asking, and Mrs. Joy Newman will be taking you through the policy, will be the difference in the opt-in and opt-out language, but she will walk you through it. Ms. Newman?
Thank you for including me today for the potential revisions of Policy 3540. As an educator, and just like students, we continue to grow, assess, and revise to make sure we're in compliance with the state and local policies. So in fifth and eighth grade, New Hanover County students are given the opportunity to participate in family life education programs. Growth and Change is in fifth grade, and then in sixth to eighth grade, they have the choice of stepping stones, my life, or no choice. Recognizing the primary role is of the parents in regarding comprehensive health and safety education, these are opt-in classes with parental permission. We would like to see the following revisions. In red, where it is crossed out, that is currently in the policy. We would like to see that entire paragraph taken out, and the paragraph above it in red inserted. Because the paragraph we're crossing out, it means that everyone is automatically in the class, suggesting it is an opt-out program. We would like to add what we have in red above what is crossed out, since New Hanover County Schools offers three choices: stepping stones, my life, or no choice.
Well.
Any questions from the committee members?
You know, you know I was gonna be jumping on this. I've talked to my wife, who was a longtime physical education teacher and actually the physical education and health director for New Hanover County Schools for many years. And she said, yeah, this is all kind of what they used to do and stuff. But I just, once again, it doesn't make any sense to me to do opt, you know, opt-in, 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 opt-in. Oh, yeah, by the way, we're gonna opt out. I mean, that, to me, I think we need to keep it uniform. I mean, we're setting up our parents for failure by saying in fifth grade, I understand, now you're in ninth grade, so you have an opportunity to be more on your own and that kind of thing. However, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh, seventh grade, eighth grade, you opt into the program. Ninth grade, we're gonna opt you out of the program. So I think I would like to keep it uniform across the way.
And you'd like to keep it uniform to opt-in or opt-out?
Opt-in.
Opt-in.
Yeah, so you, you know, the parents have the choice. And, you know, that way they're, you know, I've heard for months and months about parents having the choice in a lot of different ways.
So that is what I'm proposing, and so then we would need to also make high school health education, safety education, opt in as well.
Right.
Because currently, I don't know if anyone knows, we send home a, a letter to the parents before we teach the class, and they have the opportunity to opt out of the entire program, or they have the opportunity to opt out of certain sections, topics. And that is, and sometimes parents don't see that. So it does, it does make sense to make everything uniform.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure and clarify. We pulled a team together, and Ms. Newman, you helped me here, but, because I think I might have heard something different. I wanna make sure I'm hearing correctly, that originally, the team that we pulled together, and we were asking that fifth through eight be opt-in, correct?
Correct, and that's how we are currently.
Okay.
Yes.
Right, okay. Opt-in for fifth through eight, but we were keeping high school opt-out, is what we had discussed with the committee, and that's what the committee recommendation is, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanna highlight that because for high school to be opt-in, when you think about scheduling and that purpose, it's a different piece, and so we were keeping high school the same that it's always been. For some reason, the language got changed when we did a little history. Some reason the language got changed, I wanna say, when the new policies came over. I think maybe we just adopted some policies and maybe it fell through the cracks. And opt-out, I mean, opt-in was not for elementary. So the biggest thing we wanna make sure is that parents at that fifth through eighth grade level have the choice. It is their decision, opt-in. When we think about high school, it's still the choice, but we were doing opt-out because of the scheduling issues and just getting the information back from parents and students.
Well, and I totally, totally understand that, but again, I think we need to keep it uniform because otherwise you're gonna have parents, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, saying, we're, you know, we have to, we have a choice. We're opting in or, you know, decided not to opt in. And then, then ninth grade, all of a sudden, we're changing it up. And, you know, I think a lot of parents, especially if it's their first child, wouldn't be looking for that, so.
Ms. Crable?
I'm sorry.
Can I piggyback off that real quick? So the reason I think this was revised and it got overlooked, and then we reflected on our programs and saying because we do offer choices, that opt-out wouldn't work. But a lot of this verbiage is what the state recommends, and they recommend that everyone should have, you know, and as a family life educator, you know, my, I believe that everyone should have this, you know, opportunity. But I do understand that parents first, they have their own values, they, they have a choice. But our state's saying, you know, especially in seventh through eighth grade, this is the curriculum that needs to be taught. And so that's why we kept high school as opt-out, to make sure that everyone's getting this information. But parents do have the opportunity to opt-out. And we, and we do opt-in for middle school, just because we have, we are one of the lucky districts in the, in the state that have the opportunity, that parents get to choose a more comprehensive sexual and health education, or, you know, a, a basic, a basic one.
Right, right.
Yes. So that's, that's, I don't, I don't see how we can have opt-out, have the policy stay the, the way it is with our programs, with it being opt-out. Because parents have a choice.
So let me just clarify a piece that I think we're all missing. With high school, remember, health is, that, that is done in the health curriculum, correct?
The high school, yes.
Yes. So the piece that they would be opting out is a part of the curriculum of the high school. So that's why we don't just say, and Ms. Newman, you help me out, but we don't just say, opt-out, because this is part of the curriculum. So we're teaching the curriculum, and if we get to this portion of the curriculum that you want your child to opt out, then you notify us, if that makes any sense. I hope we're making this clear.
Well, but again, as a former sixth, seventh, and eighth grade health.
I wanna, I wanna get everybody, I wanna get everybody.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But just again, just because, and I remember we had the three programs, we, I'm old enough that we had teen aid is the second program, stepping stones, teen aid, and then you had nothing. But then, you know, if you had those same kind of situation as it is in ninth grade, if you have nothing, then you have to, you don't just have the kids sit in the library. You, you give them an alternative curriculum or an alternate assignment, which is exactly what you'd have to do in ninth grade. So it is, it's doable.
I, I, and I'm not saying it's not doable. I guess the piece that makes it different is because, because it is part of that curriculum, right? So we're giving the, the parents a choice to say, no, we're not comfortable with this, but because, because it's part of the health curriculum from the state, it is better for the parents to say, no, I'm opting out, because this is already with the state guidelines and what the state is offering, is what I would add.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I had a couple comments not related to that, because I think I'm pretty clear that we're opting out, you know, of, of everything. No, we're opting in, we're opting, we're opting into everything at all levels.
No.
All right, you guys have just talked me into circle again. Let me, let me come back to that. Let me come back. I wanna get these other things down. So is the, is the code policy, is it supposed to be Comprehensive Health and Safety Education Program?
Yes. And that was one of my notes, another revision, after, you know, you look over something a thousand times, then finally something pops out. So the state does refer to the, the health, and the Comprehensive Health Education Program as health, Comprehensive Health and Safety Education Program.
Okay, so I just wanna get that title right. And then, so I'm looking here under letter A, Comprehensive Health Education. The first line where it says Comprehensive Health Education Program must be taught to students from kindergarten through the ninth grade. So I think must is kind of important, is that you can't opt out of a curriculum that is required. The, there has to be some alternative. So I just wanna make sure that everybody is clear, because I don't want people to think that they can just go through the curriculum at any point in time and say, I don't like that social study curriculum. I don't like that health, you know, curriculum. This is a must that we have to do. So I just wanted to clarify that point. The, also too, wanted to just make sure that we are all always using the same terms. You know, I heard Mr. World of War say, call it a different program. The names have changed over the years, and just wanted to make sure that we know that grade five is Growth and, Growth and Changes, and that grade six is My Life, Choices Today for Healthy Tomorrow, or Stepping Stones to a Basically Better Living. So those are our two specific programs, or the none, and then we have to figure out what to do there. So we forgot to introduce Mr. Hall, who is, thank you for joining us today from NC Papa. Does anything from a fifth grade point of view jump out at you that, when you were reading this?
So I would just say, similar to any other curriculum, it's just that it's rare to have the option where you opt in if it's part of the curriculum, to where you opt, have to opt into that. You know, it would be something that, creating this as an opt-out only makes sense that it's, if this is part of the curriculum, then truly it should be taught, and the parents shouldn't have to opt in.
Okay. So am I correct in understanding, Ms. Newman, that a parent can opt out of any or all parts of these curriculums at all the different levels?
So at the high school, it's, it's definitely on our sheet, and, and they can opt out of a particular section. Speaking with the family life team, and we were asking this over and over again, the stepping stones, for instance, if, if someone opts out of LBGTQ, you know, lesson, the language is used inclusively throughout the other lessons that we just want the parents, we, we've never had this come up, so we were discussing it, to say if somebody does opt out. My life, for instance, is least comprehensive, and it does not include birth control or LGBTQ. Okay? So let me see if I said that right, just to be on the record. Yes. So I just wanna, just speaking with them, it's gonna be hard to opt out of a certain lesson because then they should probably take my life. So my life does not include the national standards that was approved by the board, including LBGTQ. So if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. So I wanted, the, I think I was clear on that. I just wanted to make sure that the folk, parents listening at home, understand that. And then so, it's also my understanding that in grade five, we break into gender-specific classes. So is there a plan at all to address gender-specific, you know, what do we do if somebody identifies in a non, in a, in a non-cisgender, you know, way?
So since fifth grade talks about growth and changes, and we talk about our reproductive system, we, that's why we, you know, have separate classes for biological sex, because we talk about the reproductive systems. We haven't had it come up, not saying that it wouldn't come up in the, in the future, but that, that is why we separate the boys from the girls in fifth grade. And there also, there is some lessons in sixth grade and seventh grade, which also have to do with the reproductive system. That is separate. Boys and girls are separate.
So if we, if somebody's identifying not as a boy or not as a girl, what class do you put them in?
I'm sorry, I do wanna steer this conversation to policy.
No, I, this is policy.
This is, this is procedure.
This is gonna, okay, all right.
This is, this is a procedure question. I do wanna just keep it to what this policy says. And I'll just add my two cents briefly. I think, you know, if there's a state standard curriculum that we're offering in high school, we should offer it. I wouldn't say opt-in to biology or opt-in to math. These are state standards. So, and, you know, I understand what you're saying about making everything uniform, but my God, kindergarten and 12th grade are very different places. So.
Eighth grade, ninth grade, all right.
Well, but there's a dividing line. They go to a different school. So it is different. It's, it's very different. It's high school and middle school. So I do wanna, you know, be cognizant of, look, the state standards say X, and our policy should meet the state standard. So those are my thoughts on it, but if there are no.
I do have one more. It could be policy-related. You tell me if I'm off-base. Did you have your hand up?
I did.
Okay, go ahead. Then I'll ask one question in a minute.
So I was checking the North Carolina graduation requirements to make sure, so if someone opts out, and health is one. So students are required to successfully complete CPR instruction to meet healthy living essential standards as requirement for high school graduation, accommodations, altering, all this good stuff. The other part, and I was going there, is because if, if ninth grade is required credit course for graduation, meaning health, and someone opts out, how do we know to put, or will we put, they opt out of the whole health course? But that's a, that's a requirement for graduation, and then they would come up short of credits. And I would, hey, of course, have to do a reduced credit for missing one class. That would be my, my, my concern at the high school, that if someone does not, a parent forgets to opt in for that one. We're no harm no foul at middle school, but if they don't opt in at the high school, and let's say, and I'm just saying, that may be just a part of that curriculum, but let's say they say the health, I don't want them in that health class. That would be, I don't know if we know the repercussions and the policy, if we can, I would just, I don't wanna, I don't want to have someone come up to the end and they are not eligible for, for.
Right. Well, if I could, if I could, sir, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Androgynous voice.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Well, like I say, as, and again, as Ms. Crable said, things have definitely changed since I was in the classroom. But in that time, we, we did give them an alternate assignment. We didn't just say, you don't take it. You know, and I don't think that's what is written here in red. It, it says, you know, that they would be able to opt out of that one section of the health classroom, and it would be, you know, giving them an alternate assignment. We did have to come up with other assignments. I'm not saying that's what you guys are doing in today's world, but, you know, I, you know, it was a while back that I was in the classroom, but, you know, you did come up with an alternate assignment, so the child was still in health. They still have to take that same curriculum, and they still get credit for it, still graded, but that they wouldn't necessarily have to go through this one part. I think that's what the policy says now, here in red, that, that they would have the opportunity to withhold consent for the child's participation in any part of the entire sex education portion. So that's a portion, that's, how many weeks is that?
So they have, so they have to have nine weeks of health and nine weeks of physical education in high school. The Comprehensive Health and Safety Education is anywhere from five to seven days. And that includes abstinence instruction, peer pressure instruction, STDs and HIV instruction, sexual assault, sexual abuse, and risk reduction instruction, and human sex trafficking prevention and awareness instruction. And that takes about five to seven days.
Okay.
I have a correction before we move forward. So if person, let's say, they opt totally out of health and PE, that doesn't meet safe requirements, so we can't even offer reduced requirement?
And that's, yes, I was saying, what it says here, they can opt out of any part or the entire. So if they're offering, opting out of the entire, then they're not gonna graduate. They're not gonna get their credit. So we have to do, we have to have something meaningful in place. So I don't think we should have a policy that says they can opt out of the whole thing when we're basically saying you can't graduate, you know, with.
They would have to do a reduced credit, but yeah, I agree with you.
It doesn't meet the, they can't do.
Right, it doesn't.
You said it doesn't even mean that.
Oh, okay.
So in the reduce, you have to do the state mandated.
Right, okay, yeah, so.
And the state will at least give you 22, and then we have the local credits.
I know Dr. Faison wanted to say something. Dr. Faison?
I wanna just try to put some clarity on a couple of things. First, the reason the committee, and I wanna say the committee was our PTA parent and our family life teachers. The reason why we are strongly suggesting opt-in for education is first, we're talking fifth or eighth grade, and the parents giving them that say. And when you think about health and PE at those grade levels, it's not as, these are, they're will actually be going to this class. So they will actually be doing these components that are in the curriculum. So that is one of the differences, I wanna say, about elementary, okay? We don't, we don't go as deep in our health classes in elementary, but if you go to these classes, you're gonna have a different choice, and the parents have a choice in what that looks like. So they have different choices that they can, they can actually share. When we talk about the high school, we're talking about a section of the curriculum that you would have to find, the, the parent would be saying that my child will not be a part of that section of the curriculum. So that's why we're saying with that, because we have to teach certain things. And then you, you get into, sometimes curriculums cross over. I mean, you're not gonna cross over too much in this area, but we, that's why we're asking for the opt-out, because this is, this is a state requirement. There are certain things we have to do. So when we share with you, maybe we're, we're gonna talk about this component. If you wanna opt out, and you feel strongly about that, then you do that. But to have to opt-in to the health curriculum itself, that portion is gonna be difficult. I'm not saying it's not doable. I'm not saying that. I know we've both been high school principals. I'm not saying that. But what I'm talking about is thinking about the educator, right? So let's think about the principals and the teachers, and, and the parents, and what is more feasible, and what do we, and it's what we've always done. This is what parents, I know it might sound like, oh, we're doing opt-in this time, and then we're going opt-out. But from my understanding, this is what our community is used to. I just wanted to bring that point.
All right, I think we have to, yeah, very brave.
In that section that you've added in, it says that the parents or guardians have to submit a letter. In our normal, regular policies, we always say who we're submitting it to, superintendent or designee, you know, assistant superintendent, principal or designee. So I think that that should, we should call that out somewhere on where parents submit their forms so that we're clear on the chain of command of this, this permission slip. And so we know that they can or cannot take the class.
And if I could speak to that, actually, the, the part we're crossing out, it says right there, consent must be in writing to principal. So that's what we had in the old policy, is it told us exactly where it went.
So if the principal's not the right person, I'm okay with that. If it's the health, that you have to submit it to the health and PE teacher or designee, then I just wanted to, I want us to call out where this goes, so that we don't get anybody in la-la land going, I turned it in and you're making my kid take the class, or I turned it in and the, my kid's not taking the class for some reason.
So I would say the principal and designee, that covers, because the principals will probably have the life, the health science teachers do it, but that covers both ways if they want to be a part of that.
So to, we, we're gonna write in, just give us some words on where, where it should be submitted?
The, to the principal or their designee is, I think that is fine. Ms. Newman, would you agree?
Yes.
I agree. Okay. So with those.
So please recap what we just voted on for the opt-in, opt-out, because I am still confused.
So right now, grades five through eight would be opt-in. Grades nine through 12 would be opt-out.
Correct. That's what we, we are proposing, yeah.
So everybody's opting in? Okay.
No.
No, everyone?
Five through eight is opt-in. High school is opt-out. Everything below high school, opt-in, high school, opt-out. And so with that, I would like to call the question with the amended language, where we're adding, parents or guardians shall complete and submit the bottom portion of the letter and return it to the super, or, I'm sorry, return it to the principal or designee, indicating they want their child excused, et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to ask for a motion to pass the policy as amended.
So moved.
Uh, is there a second? I will second the policy. Ms. Joy, could you please call the roll on this one?
Mr. Wurdebor?
No.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
And I will vote yes. The policy is moved forward to the board for consideration by a vote of two to one. All right, the next policy update on our agenda is policy code 4400, attendance. Uh, Ms. Varum, I'm going to turn this one over to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so through our work with grading practices, um, attendance and the attendance policy came back up as a part of discussion. I know that it has been a part of discussion, um, on, on many fronts, not just within that task force. Um, to give you a little bit of history, um, we had additional high school requirements with regard to attendance beyond 11th absence, um, up until, uh, April of 2019, which at that time, um, the policy was changed in an effort to, um, not affect the dropout rate with students who had extensive absences, but passed courses. Um, and then, so at that time, it, um, those requirements were removed. And then in last June of 2021, in the attendance policy discussion, June 8th of 2021, um, our new policy was adopted that really, um, kind of stayed toward those parameters. Um, what we are recommending at this point, and we've had discussion, like I said, not only with, um, the, the multidisciplinary team that brought these up in grading practices, but also a team of teachers have provided, especially, um, high school, but also elementary and middle, have provided specific feedback. And then student support would continue to provide guidance. Um, you can see in red line our recommendations. Um, for one, our, our current policy that's in place, um, beyond capturing how to code attendance and school-related activities and that kind of thing, the majority of the rest of the dialogue in there is about makeup work. This goes much further. Um, elementary and middle school requirements, the principal or designee, of course, can request a conference at any time. Um, looking at elementary and middle students who are absent more than 20 days in a school year may be retained. So that part is, um, just, they may. That is not the sole decision on that. Elementary and middle school students who are chronically absent, and this was discussed, um, last time in policy committee, um, Dr. Faust mentioned the definition for chronic absence, and that's more than 10% of the school year. Um, we have in here, they would be referred to the act for academic and/or attendance interventions within multi-tiered systems of support, our MTSS structure. Um, of course, continued absence, absenteeism may result in notification to authorities as, um, required under general statute for compulsory attendance. Um, so that could include Department of Social Services, Juvenile Court, or the district attorney. And, you know, the language here says where the parent or guardian is not cooperating. We know that general statute identifies that as making a good faith effort. So we have those processes in place already. Um, we also have in here, uh, because we felt this was important, students arriving late or requesting early dismissal, not only should they be accompanied by a parent or guardian, but, um, this would be monitored at the school level. And also, that impacted student may be referred also, um, to the MTSS team, multi-tiered systems of support team, because they're missing quality academic time. Uh, just because you got counted present doesn't mean you, um, were there for all of the instructional time required. So we, we wanted to add that piece in. Now to the part that's really the, the biggest change, uh, with high school requirements, high school students who are chronically absent, again, same definition, um, which is more than 10% of the year, will be referred, again, for academic or attendance interventions, um, because we do have functional MTSS supports at our high schools. And then the following procedure will be implemented each semester. This is what, uh, we've gotten some teacher feedback on this. Uh, with first and second absence, makeup work shall be assigned by the, the teacher as deemed appropriate. Of course, completed within a reasonable amount of time is determined by the teacher. Um, the reasonable amount of time and appropriate is, you know, all to be, um, defined further. Um, the third through 10th absence, again, um, same thing with makeup work and when to complete it. If absences are consecutive, more time may be allowed at discretion. And parents are notified after the third, sixth, and 10th absence. That's consistent with, um, compulsory attendance law. Um, the next, C, 11th absence. In grades nine through 12, a student who misses more than 10 days in a semester shall not be awarded course credit except by determination of the principal or designee upon careful review of the student's records with a panel of individuals to include that student, the parent guardian, or both, teacher or teachers of the courses in question, and any other appropriate support staff. For example, an EC chairperson if it's a student with an IEP, and then MTSS coordinator if it's a student who has been problem solved through, um, the MTSS team. And then the rest of that is consistent, makeup work assigned, completed in a reasonable timeframe. And of course, we know, um, total absences, um, whether they're lawful or unlawful, um, you know, may require, um, further documentation, whether it's from a doctor or court documentation if a student has, um, has been called to appear. And then, um, we also have in here, schools shall offer incentives to provide recognition of perfect attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Varum. Greatly appreciated. Um, real quick, I will remind my committee members that we are time limited, so I am going to try to stick to like, you know, five or six minutes on this. Usually I don't go first, but I've been running around since, I think, December of 2020 screaming that kids needed to be back in school. Uh, and so I wholeheartedly support a policy designed to recognize that reality, uh, which this is. So I don't really have any comments on the policy itself other than to say that I appreciate the work and get your butt in school.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I can, um, I would like to echo, uh, your, your thoughts on this. Absolutely, like, and I think we probably all do, so why don't we go ahead and call the question right now? Unless you, unless you have something?
I have a comment before we call the question. Thank you, Mr. Wurdebor.
Sure.
Um, first of all, the, um, this is not content related. It's like, are, are we going to clean this up so it's a little bit readier? Like there's more spacing in between things and, and fixed typos? Should I just tell you those kind of things later than not do it now?
So I think that's fine. I think also this was not, um, this is from the only, um, version I could transfer into an editable version.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, and Ms. Joy and I did speak about that. I said, I don't have the headers. I don't have, and she said that, um, we would get help from McKenna on that.
Okay, so in section A, um, all the way down to bottom, where it says to be in attendance during remote instruction days, students must complete their daily assignments either online or offline and have a daily check-in through a two-way communication. Um, so are we still sticking with that? That just by turning in your work, you're counted as here?
So that, that was the determination in the past.
I know.
So it's, it's at the pleasure...
But we never used to have that. So now we do. So are we staying with that?
Um, it's at the pleasure of the board. So that is not an area that, um, the, when, with regard to looking at high school requirements for attendance, that's not an area that was mentioned for revision.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm...
But we can certainly entertain it.
I'm confused as to where you are. I see to be in attendance during remote instruction days, students must complete their daily assignments either online or offline and/or have a daily check-in. I, I see it as only when in remote instruction? Am I misreading that?
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's what I'm just saying, is that there, that was, that was a problem being remote instruction, that we're counting people here just because they turned in their work when they might not ever have logged in, ever. Um, or they turned their computer on and they were in their bed, you know, eating cereal, and they weren't paying attention one bit. But they turned in their work, so they got counted as present. So is that still staying in?
That is the recommendation to still stay in.
Okay, and so that's what our team thinks is okay?
There has not been any discussion otherwise. So it hasn't been brought up for, um, further discussion. I'm sure it could be. Um, the, the, I hate to say the devil's in the details, but it, it's really difficult to capture attendance in other ways. You're in a remote instruction, you can't assume that students are able to be online the entire period of time. We've had some students that have to complete, um, other take-home work. I mean, we transitioned to one remote day, I think, during this past school year. Isn't that right?
We have, yeah.
Right, and based on whatever those factors are with that remote day, students may not have access to stay on a Zoom, that kind of thing. Um, so we did not take this further. If you would like further discussion on this, I think we can certainly do that.
No, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we're all clear that that's what we're doing, because that was one complaint that we heard a lot about, but hopefully we won't have, but like if we schedule a remote day in our calendar, let's say, January 6th, you know, in between when we come back, we all know that most people aren't, aren't coming that day. You know, they might turn a computer on, but they're probably not doing, having any instruction. So that's, was one of my concerns. And then the last thing that I wanted to ask about was, it's in section D, the school-related activities, and you list the one through five. Um, career and technical education, student organizations and activities count, um, as an excused absence, but what about like Science Olympiad, Battle of the Books, um, other school-related things that, I mean, I wouldn't call those a field trip. Um, so is there a reason that we called out CTE? Is that just because of the curriculum?
Yes, yes. So, um, so the other ones like Science Olympiad or Battle of the Books, whatever, they would be school-initiated and scheduled activities. The reason that career, technical education, student organization activities is listed in here is, um, because that's a part of those federal regulations that, um, we have to specifically identify those as excused if, um, like for students who are doing internships through their CTE programs.
Or job shadowing, those kind of things, okay.
Right, right, yeah. It's a specific requirement.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, uh, I will entertain a motion to pass policy 4400 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Policy 4400 will be sent to the board for review. Our next policy up for discussion, and actually, I'm going to turn it over to one of our board members. I believe this policy was passed at our last meeting or the meeting before, but, uh, wanted further discussion. So, uh, this is policy 7262, communicable diseases. Mr. Wurdebor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of things I would like everyone to note in section, uh, or my point one is in section one, it says we need, well, we need to get the very best information to make, uh, rational and, uh, logical decisions. It says in the first paragraph that we need to balance, uh, the protection of the rights and student, of students and employees with the need to control the spread of communicable diseases. I think that's, uh, a keynote in, in my discussion here. If we go down to subsection C2, if we, uh, it says the local health department or CDC. Two lines later, it adds in another, it, it adds in these words, relevant, other relevant medical authority. So my point here is, we need to further define this entity, other relevant medical authority, and add a third option for the information on the first line. A pan, my suggestion would be a panel of three to five providers, uh, at least two of them being medical doctors, to advise the board. Not to tell the board what to do, um, but I think, you know, to advise the board on these kind of situations. Um, and I didn't want to get into weeds of how to select them, but I, I think there may be something similar to what we do for the Cape Fear Community College, where, uh, providers could come up with their resumes and we could meet with them and come up with, but that's, I know that may be in the weeds. So if it is, I'll step back.
So, so all I would say is, um, you know, we all heard the same information from the health department for months, and I, personally, and I'm sure you did as well. I talked to several physicians, um, as an individual. Um, and you and I made a decision about masks, uh, with the information from the health department. Uh, five other people disagreed. Uh, I made a decision. I said, I wanted the schools back open. Six of you, health department, we all said no. So I, I don't think it's a good idea for us to say, okay, well, let's get the physicians that, you know, we might agree with or disagree with. I don't think the decisions that this board made had anything to do with, you know, the specific guidance that the health department was offering. They didn't recommend anything, nor should they. They gave us the information and we made the decision. And I think as board members, if we want more information, we should go to other doctors and, and talk to them as individuals rather than having some different entity. I mean, if we're talking about a time of crisis and another pandemic, first of all, shoot me, uh, then shoot me again. And third of all, you know, I really don't think it would be a good idea to say, okay, let's assemble this team that, you know, we, we have a health department. We have a team. And, uh, I really appreciate the job that they did, uh, throughout the pandemic. I think they were aces. I think they were great, and, uh, I want to continue down that road. So that was just my two cents. Ms. Crable?
Um, those aren't quite my two cents, but it's the same, the same, um, concepts. I don't think we need to add another layer of complication to that. Um, I'm concerned if we have this panel, you know, who does it report to? Who pays for it? Um, do we have to take their advice? Um, so I, I like the way it's written. This is what they do across the state, um, the State School Boards Association. And this isn't just like pandemic stuff. This is like everything. You know, this is every communicable disease that we already know about and any new one that's coming. So I am not...
Multi-Box is coming.
I am not in favor of, um, of changing the language of this at all.
And if I could just, uh, and I'm, I'm not asking to change the language. I'm saying let's define what it says. We had, it says in here already, uh, with all due respect to my, my colleagues here, or other relative, it says it in the policy, or other relevant medical authority. So it's there. So why don't we define that? And then, you know, that's all I'm asking. Let's define what this other relevant medical, I'm reading it right out of the thing, other relevant medical authority is. And then why do we, you know, why are we afraid to get more areas of information? I mean, I don't want to have, you know, if, if I go to a doctor and I don't agree with the doctor's opinion, then I get a second opinion. So again, why can't we have a second opinion on this? Why don't, and to answer some of your questions, um, you know, I, I, I can't speak for, you know, medical doctors, but we may actually have, um, met, you know, I think we have a, a person with us even today that would probably volunteer to be part of this. Um, and in so, in saying that, that kind of thing, I think we may have many medical folks that would volunteer. You know, you think about, you know, I think back to my, my, uh, days that I was a coach, when we had folks that would line up and help give physicals so that athletes could be part of, of our sports teams. And they didn't sit there and say, how much am I going to get paid for this? They did it out of the goodness of their heart. And I think we have an, uh, a plethora of medical folks that would want to help us out.
It's a...
And, and again, I'm just asking for a definition of part of the policy that already exists.
I, I think the policy as written got us through the pandemic. The ABC Collaborative came, they joined us. Um, you know, there, you know, perhaps the, the state, uh, and the state, um, health department could issue its own guidance, or the CDC, I mean, those are relevant authorities as well. Again, this, this policy got us through, uh, the worst pandemic in my lifetime. And I think, uh, I'd, I'd like to vote on it.
Uh, yeah, I do too. And I, I just think that we don't need to be that specific in the weeds, you know, at the policy level, that, um, and I, I don't think we need to be counting on volunteers to help us decide policy. Um, just like we talked about, um, when another board member had brought up about getting, you know, legal counsel from, you know, people that were experts in their field perhaps. So, um, I, I don't think that we need to, um, add anything more. So I'm, I'm ready for the question as well.
Ms., uh, Ms. Joy, can you please call the roll?
Could we, uh, define exactly what we're saying here, please?
Uh, I, uh, is there a motion to pass the policy?
I make a motion that we approve 7262 as written for the second time.
And I'll second the motion. Ms. Joy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
No.
All right. Policy is passed as written, two to one, and will go before the board for further consideration by the entire Board of Education. All right, moving on to policy 7805, superintendent evaluation. I'm really not sure where to start with this, but I guess, Mr. Shive?
So I drafted a version of the policy for the board's consideration for the last meeting. I know some board members had feedback on that. I first just want to note that there's no requirement that you even have superintendent evaluation policy. Many districts do not. While it is required that you do evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis, exactly how the board goes about doing that, this needs to be in compliance with Dr. Faust's contract and state statute. So there's no requirement that you do have a policy. That being said, some districts have chosen to put a bit of more of a process and policy, and if that's the board's pleasure, then you certainly can do that. I'm, and I'm not sure, looking at the versions that are posted for this meeting, I see the version that I created, and then there's another version.
I think that's just the former, I think that's just there for reference. It's the former policy that the board rejected or asked to be sent back to policy.
Yeah, because that, that, that language, I would not recommend that language for a few different reasons, including the portion regarding release of numerical scores.
Yes, I reviewed the sections added in evaluation process B. You know, I, I think the board wanted us, my, my understanding was the directive from our board to the committee was to be more specific with regards to the evaluation policy. I believe that this certainly meets that requirement. Thank you, Dr. Shive, for your work, but I didn't really have anything to add to it. I think it's pretty good.
Which one are we talking about?
Seventy-eight oh five.
No, I know the number.
The one in red, the one.
Are we talking about the short version or the average or the unaverage?
The, the short, the short version was the one the board rejected.
Okay.
So this longer version is the updated, new and improved.
Okay, so the longer version appears to me to be from the State School Boards Association recommended policy with some words tossed in from our old, with, from our old policy. Me personally, I would like to go, when we go to letter B, to leave in the part that was struck out that talks about the superintendent providing us with the self-assessment.
So when you're proposing, Ms. Crable, it is to go 100% with the School Boards Association policy?
Well, to go, yes, and then take out this part where it says, like, where it's, the, the school board will do this by Tuesday in April and then do this and average and median and all those kind of things. That's, that's what I brought.
In the new one.
It tells us you have to? Okay, all right. Then I, then I suppose go straight up, you know, what the, the School Boards Association, because we, we have a hard enough time coming to consensus, and this is one of those ones that many other districts are using, and they have used with fidelity and they've used appropriately. So I, I didn't look back in through that book to see if those, if, I, I thought it was just one thing that our board, our old board had written in. But yeah, I, I think if that's the case, then we should go straight up.
This, this one was mimicking the old.
Right, right.
Evaluation process.
Right, and I would rather just do the, the, the School Boards Association version.
Should we move this to our meeting in July and just, or do you want to just put the policy from the NCSBA?
Well, we gotta have, we gotta have an evaluation by June 30th. So.
The policy doesn't have to be passed.
But you don't have to have the policy in place to do the evaluation.
No, I mean, we have to have an evaluation done, so it doesn't really matter.
So that's why, do you want to just wait till July and have the NCSBA's language, the exact language? Because again, this doesn't affect our evaluation timeline. The evaluation has to be done anyway.
Ms. Wolford, did you want to?
I would just say the policy when it came to us, they were completely different, in my opinion, and I agree with the state tools, what we're using, and I think we should follow that and their recommendations. I mean, I think to Ms. Crable's point about the, the dates, I haven't really had a chance to look, compare the two. I know we have to finish it by June 30th, so I think we should adopt this, especially in light of the fact that we are doing one this month. So, because that's, that's our, that's what the second policy is.
I, I agree, it has to be done.
We're not going to get there anyway.
Here's, here's my concern. Here's my concern. We pass a policy tonight that we really haven't read, and then it governs how we have to evaluate. I mean, are we really comfortable passing the NCSBA policy, which I'm comfortable doing in July, but then having that govern an evaluation process when none of us have seen that exact language?
Well, I hear you, and I also agree that we should not be, just because our policy committees' meetings are one hour before our board meeting, we, we should not be adopting a policy one hour later, because the rest of the board would have no chance to have read it and absorbed it at all.
And then it would govern the next three weeks.
Well, may I say, you try, we, we tried to adopt that other one, like, you try to get rid of second, first reading on it and to adopt it.
No, to get rid of.
We don't, we don't have.
Waive the first reading.
We don't have.
Right, so thank you.
We don't, you know, we don't have a need for first readings with these policies. They're already part of our policy making what these are.
Right, but you were trying to, we were trying to pass it without having that, that initial, you know, 30 days like we usually have.
I don't think this one's been approved. The seventy-eight oh five has not been.
It has not.
It has not been approved.
So what I can say, I mean, it doesn't matter with me, but you have to abide by the contract.
Right.
And the policy has to follow the contract. So, I mean, even if you don't adopt it today.
We still have.
My contract still enforces what you have to do.
Right.
Right, so we can't do some of the things that are in here.
By the June 30th, you have to, I mean, the evaluation, of course, the process will be done, but this does not follow contract. And so you have to abide by the contract.
So I'm, I'm okay with tabling the discussion until next policy committee meeting, so that we have a chance to read the different language. And then again, I mean, to Dr. Faust's point, our policy should probably say something about contracts, you know, that unless superseded by a contract.
I don't, I don't think that it really has to, because that's just North Carolina state law. The contract supersedes the policy.
But I think a lot of people don't recognize that, including our board. I don't think we understood that.
Yeah.
That's my personal opinion. I don't think we understood that, that, that contract trumped policy.
I have no problem putting that sentence in there. Mr. Wolford, are you okay waiting on this until the next policy committee?
We've been waiting, Alex.
Okay. So, policy seventy-eight oh five will be tabled until the July policy committee meeting. All right, really excited for this. Student voice presentation. Really excited for this.
Mr. Wolford, I mean, Mr. Boyer, before we get started, all right, so this meeting is supposed to be over within five minutes. And I am willing to go over some, but we do have a turnover that we have to start another meeting at five.
Yeah, let's, let's, we'll call her adjournment at, let's see, I mean, let's go to 4:40. Is 15 minutes enough? Or should we wait? 15 minutes should be.
I mean, they, they've got a lot to say, and they've worked really hard, so I would hate to have them, like, fly through it for that. It's just.
Well, we, I mean, I'll, I'll go until 4:55.
But we can't, we can't, because we've got to turn this whole thing around. We've got other board members that have to come in and take their seats. We've got other people, we've got the audience to get started. Do you want to start with something and then we can come back in July or?
What was the option you planned to use right now?
I, I think, I think we can probably.
On the 21st?
Oh, no, they're, they're ready.
Yeah, I think we can go until about 4:45 or 4:50. Is that enough time? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, they, no, no, it's okay. I'm going to just introduce who you have here.
Yeah.
We've got Cassidy Thompson from Hoggard, she's a rising 11th grader. Saman Vaughn, also from Hoggard, rising 11th grader. Caroline Morrison from New Hanover High, rising 11th grader. Benji Kaney from Laney, rising 10th, and Tanya Toon, also from Laney, a rising 10th grader, who will also be doing the Star Spangled Banner later, so y'all don't want to miss that. And Lucy Demick from New Hanover High, rising 11th grader. And they kind of have, you know, piecemealed what they can speak to, and so I think for you guys, maybe the adjustment would be, you don't have to necessarily read every word. I think they were kind of planning on having the time and space to kind of read through, because we, they recognize that some of you maybe haven't seen it, some of you may be looking at it for the first time. So feel free to interrupt, I guess, in between sections, and yeah. Cassidy, first.
Welcome, y'all. Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Just wanted to start with the overview. We, what we're doing, we're striving for a system that fosters and sustains student activism and engagement, and ultimately provides intentional structures for students from across the county to have an outlet for, to express their concerns and ideas. These structures will be inclusive, equitable, and representative, and transcend an act of tokenism, which is mentioned further down what that means. This policy seeks to provide structures for students to work and collaborate with equal voice with adult decision-makers, so there's options and opportunities for students to impact decisions that are going to have a direct impact on them.
These are the principles we've identified to support this policy. All students have valid opinions and come from unique backgrounds, and should be encouraged to express how something, including policies, may affect them differently. Student voice structures seek cooperation, collaboration, and co-construction between students and adults at a school board level, et cetera. Authentic student voice structures make students feel more involved, heard, and valued, because they include students in decisions and actions that directly impact them and their peers.
Key terms and definitions. Student voice, recognizing and acting upon the fact that students are the primary stakeholders of our education and should be partners in shaping it. Tokenism, in the context of youth voice work, a form of inauthentic inclusion of young people where A, students are asked to represent the experience of all students or all student, or all those that they share an identity group with. B, young people are invited into spaces primarily to validate their perspective of adults without being integrated into decision-making processes.
We just wanted to define some terms that were really important to our structures we're implementing, such as equity, which is providing people with different resources or opportunities according to their unique circumstances in order to succeed, and equality, which is providing people with the same resources or opportunities in order to succeed.
Our last two key terms and definitions are opportunity gap and achievement gap. Opportunity gap is when students are not being given equal rep, equal resources and opportunities based on certain characteristics about them. This causes these students to have an, have unequal opportunities to succeed when compared to other students. The opportunity gap recognizes there are systems at work impacting individual opportunities. Achievement gap refers to outputs, the unequal or inequitable distribution of educational results and benefits, which are a result of the opportunity gap.
So part D, this is where we get into the real substance of it, student voice structures and standards. This policy would establish and maintain the following structures each academic year to reach the goal of increased student voice in New Hanover County schools. So we have five structures here. Some of these are things already in place that we just have, that we want to be written in stone, like set in stone. So the first one is to convene a superintendent's student advisory council, which is something that is already in place, that meets quarterly, includes representation from all high schools, and the selection determined by the superintendent's office or designee. And then the second structure is to convene student equity teams in middle and high schools, which again is something that we already have, that meets regularly in individual schools, convenes biannually as a full district, and selection determined by adult liaisons in each school with assistance from the chief equity office of New Hanover County schools. And then the third one, which this is a new one that we're proposing, is ensure two high school students in every board committee that reports directly to the board. And going off of that, on committees where members have voting power, student members should have voting power as well.
Number four is a new one that we would like to share with you guys and put on this policy, which is to establish a New Hanover County School student engagement team, which is a body of students established to maintain and strengthen student voice structures in New Hanover County schools. This can include but will not be limited to high school students from the superintendent's student advisory council, middle and high school students from the student equity teams, and high school students on board committees, as well as additional high school students in the district. This student engagement team will A, have opportunities to engage with adult allies, including school board, district leaders and staff, and school leaders. B, will host training for student representatives on youth voice and to consistently gather peer input in an equitable manner. C, include information sessions with opportunities to learn about and provide feedback on the current issues that district admin and/or board are trying to address. D, ensure student representation from each school, and most of all, add student voice to the monthly regular student, I mean, Board of Education agenda as a permanent item to provide dedicated space for updates and student feedback.
Additionally, to connect and convene other students who aren't in these formal structures, we'll have a yearly kickoff summit to set our goals and objectives for the school year, and then a closing summit to reflect and improve, which we've done on the Juniper Summit.
Now, we have some questions for you guys that you can, you know, talk about and address, but before I say them, we are talking specifically about the policy, not exactly about the implementation of what I'm going to talk about now. One of the questions we have are who can be in charge of overall student logistics, transportation, time of meetings, excused absences, et cetera, et cetera. Number two, who will be responsible for selection process of the student, students on board committees, which was in number three? And who would be responsible for the selection process and meeting slash facilitation of the student engagement team, which was in number four?
Well, those are all very good questions and ones that I had as well. Did you have any thoughts on that, you know, based on what you've seen from the different summits and gatherings that you all have had this year so far? I'm going to type them in, so we have.
Yeah, I mean, the, these last questions at the end are kind of not really necessarily to do like with the policy. It's kind of things after. I don't know if we necessarily need to include these, but they're definitely things we've been thinking about. I don't think we have, like, answers for all of them. It's kind of things we want to figure out with you all as well, because we don't know exactly who all could be involved in this and how the logistics of things will work. But we mostly just wanted to see what you guys think about the policy, about these five structures, and what we have written right now.
Well, can I tell you what I think? I think you guys did a really, really, really good job. I'll point out that it's summer, and you guys are working, and you guys are working to make a difference, and you're working to make change. And I want to meet you where you need to be met, and so my recommendation, because I don't think we could possibly vote on this in that level of time. I am assuming you are going to plan on continuing to meet over the next month. I would like to have a separate hour of the policy committee meeting dedicated to us, the three of us, the policy committee, sitting down and working through some of this. I'll spend this month talking to my fellow board members, talking to my fellow committee members. I'm going to share this with them, because they're going to have questions, because it goes to us, and then it goes up there. I know they're going to have a lot of questions about voting. I know they're going to have a lot of questions about the selection process. But I think what you've presented us with is an excellent first step, and if it's all right with the committee, that would be my proposal to add an additional hour and have it just student voice in July.
That sounds good.
We can do a more, have a work session, you know, before the, we do have, we do have an interim meeting that we would have time to make it a work session too, if we wanted to, just like we did with these policies 6140, where we had to talk about Shaq and our goals. We actually had.
That's right, we do have to have a, we do have to have a June interim, right?
The, so, that's another opportunity, so I guess maybe we can reach out to Dr. Smith.
Well, let's ask the students, what would be, is it rushing you to be ready in two weeks' time to have a work session and a discussion with the full Board of Education? We could, either one.
I don't think that's rushing us. I don't think they're good, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're ready.
Because really, the only rush is us, because you've left, you have effectively, you know, hunted, you know, the ball to us to be thinking about your implementation guidance. So really, it's up to us kind of just to get our juices flowing.
Let me also ask our staff, I know you guys are very busy, I know people are going out of town. Obviously, you guys are included in implementing this, not included, you are the implementees. Dr. Faust's staff, is that, is that too much to put on?
Well, that's why I was suggesting that we, we don't necessarily need the whole senior staff to brainstorm with us, but we do need them to weigh in on, okay, so, well, I'm just going to look over there, because Eddie's on the end. So Eddie, this is going to fall under your department. What do you think? You know, the, or.
Transportation.
You've got, you've got a transportation piece question in there. So maybe, you know, the folks in senior staff can be looking at those questions and offering us some guidance that we could share with the team, or if you want to, you know, offer it now, but we got to.
Yeah, and if, if I could just say one quick thing here, from a word in their words. First of all, I want to thank you guys for meeting with me today. It really opened my eyes to a lot of things, that was great. But I do think we do need to have some school-level folks, as I had shared with you guys, you know, a couple administrators that we could talk to, just because I think that, you know, they're going to be doing a lot of the nuts and bolts on selection and all that kind of things. So I think that they, we should really invite at least maybe four or five principals to join this conversation too. It's, you know, great for us to make decisions, but. It's, you know, great for us to make decisions, but if they're going to be putting the, you know, the tires to the road, they need to be part of this discussion too.
Yeah, I agree, we definitely, sorry, we definitely want to have those people, just so we can be as inclusive and equitable as we said, so that's definitely things we've been thinking about in next steps are, including the teachers and people who are going to help make the selection process, like, what does the rubric look like, how are we going to make it fair, that's definitely big things that we're working on now.
Thank you.
I gathered that from your shirts.
In your thinking, you're going to also see transportation, so that'll need a budget item, I mean, a budget line.
Okay.
So yeah, so there's a bunch of stuff in there that we have to sort of talk about, and then when we're talking about absences, we've just, you know, looked at a policy about that, that would be a, I guess, school-initiated event.
Madam Chair, I would like, you know.
Well, you're the chair.
Well, I'm policy chair.
Okay.
But as board chair, I would ask for you to consider, you know, my recommendation, and I think yours as well, would be to add this to a work session for our June meeting in two weeks?
Yeah.
You said it, you already said it.
Yeah, I did, yeah. Yes, I mean, I think that that, and our meeting is June the 21st, we have not set our agenda for that, I think a work session would probably be the most appropriate, so that we can all just sit down and kind of sit at a table and chat about it for that. And if you, if you want us all, then we're going to have to sit around and chat about it with the, you know, hundreds of friends that are watching us, you know, online, so you guys seem to hold up under that pressure pretty well, so that's.
Can I just say, I like the fact that you've got, being included in board meetings every month, I think hearing from you continuously and being intentional is very important, so I'd just like to say I like that part.
This was, yeah, this is definitely a lot of good work, I wasn't quite sure how you guys were going to pull it all together, but you did a really good job in doing that. So we, and it's up to, the board will have to decide, I guess, under the XXX, X, you know, what number you will be in, so we will definitely need to have dialogue with our senior staff on where that would fall. Unless it was a board committee, then it would be, it would fall to us, but.
So we are definitely up against the clock.
Yeah.
I appreciate everybody's work today, thank you, staff, thank you, Dr. Faust, committee members, but I am in desperate need of calling for an adjournment.
And I also want to just add that you all, you have our emails, that they're on the website, if you have questions, you know, feel free, feel free to email us as we're talking, we're getting ready for that 21st, you know, we're all open, you know, for conversation, you know, that way, but if you email, then we can email you back, and we can, you know, kind of talk through some stumbling blocks, or just our thoughts and your thoughts.
And is there a motion?
Thank you.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned. That's a better gavel.